Sure I am. All right, good evening everyone, it is May twenty-third at six thirty P M, so I should call this meeting to order.
Dave Larson District five.
And the Morris District four.
Look for him in superintendent.
Carly River District one. Yeah, and we're down on Street two. And welcome to all of our guests, both in person and online, appreciate you spending some time with us this evening. Um, all right, we will quickly go through our welcome message, so this is just a, um, some agreements that we have, how to engage with each other. Um, this is part of the courageous conversations, um, so we in the board agree to stay engaged, experienced comfort, be vulnerable, speak your truth, and expect and accept non closure. Um, I haven't said this in a while too, but just a reminder for folks that we also have a fairly extensive like, uh, document that kind of outlines how we should be engaging with each other, um, and I encourage that's available for anyone to look at, um, because I think accountability, um, is best supported by all of us, right? So if there are ways that we're engaging, um, with each other or with whatever, um, in a way that doesn't, um, honor those agreements, um, I'd like to know that as well. Um, all right, and so now to our land and labor acknowledgement. Uh, so we the Tuckwell School District acknowledge that the land where we teach, collaborate, learn, and play, the traditional land, the first people of Seattle, the Duwamish and Mukashu people, past and present, and honor with gratitude the land itself and the Duwamish and Mukashu tribes. As a public school district, we have a responsibility for the stewardship of this land, and we strive to work alongside the Duwamish and Mukashu people who have been living and working here since time immemorial. We further acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon the labor of Black and Brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. We remember that Black and Brown people were born and died working this land against their will for generations. We also acknowledge the continued contribution of the labor of survivors over the centuries to today of all immigrant labor, including voluntary involuntary trafficked, forced, and undocumented pupils in the building of what we refer to as the United States. As a school district leadership, we pledge to recognize and work against systems that have historically and currently enforced and created inequities among the people that we serve. I can't help but say amen. Uh, so I had a hard time reading that last thing, documents, and just didn't read that so. And now. Please stand if you would like. We can't. At both of the leaders. We're in line, not the United States government. And to do the republic, the world should stand. One mission, I hope. And it was all, we're, we're, we're being just. Uh, okay, so we'll move to, uh, move the agenda for tonight's meeting. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Um, it goes approved. Uh, so I'm going to our first public comment, um, opportunity. Um, it looks like there's not many folks online, so likely no one there, um, but of course don't want to discount that if you're online and would like to make a public comment, you can use that raise hand function or type it in the chat. Is there anyone set up for public comment here?
No.
Okay, um, then we will move past, there'll be an opportunity of, uh, as always, something. Um, okay, so now to our reports, um, our student representative is not here this evening unless that's in the morning. Okay, uh, so then we'll move to the superintendent report.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Uh, just a few items to update. Uh, one, I just wanted to highlight that originally we were going to have an update on our mental health progress for this year. Um, and Dr. Bor shade and Representative Lynn have been working on that, so we pushed that to June. Um, because our student representative is really trying to get a lot of student voices in there and pass, so it just wasn't ready for this particular meeting. But, um, I think you're gonna hear a lot of good input for the next one that happens June thirteenth, so we look forward to making that presentation, uh, June thirteenth. Um, a reminder, this is pretty wild, but in two and a half weeks, June ninth is Foster High School graduation. So that's happening at the stadium, seven o'clock. Yes, only two and a half weeks, uh, that's pretty quick. So, um, it's just such a great opportunity to see with those seniors who are graduating, it's a fantastic event. Um, and I'm, uh, I always like the fact that we're able to do it here, I know in the past it's been at other spots, hopefully the weather cooperates with that, so we've had some times where it hasn't. Um, so that'll be exciting, June ninth is the date. Um, two other items, one, we still have a few spring athletes that are competing. Uh, this week is the state track meet, we have some other, all of our other spring events, we also have an athletics report that's coming up in June. Um, but these state, uh, athletes go into the state track meet, we have three, I believe, one sprinter, um, for the young women's team and two, uh, shot and disc throwers on the young men's team. So the state track meet is Thursday through Saturday down at Matt's Home High School, uh, in Tacoma, so it's a little bit of a trek down there, but great facility, the state meet is in the same spot every year, so plenty of parking down there, they have food trucks, uh, it's a great event. And then lastly, uh, yesterday I met with our representative David Hackney regarding our capital request that we had put in for the Foster Performing Arts Center. And he did receive the request, we chatted about that, he talked about that there was kind of a limitation on the number of items that they were gonna put out there. And that there was more than one request, not for the PAC, but from the area that he represents, as well as, uh, represented request. So he said, uh, that he's, you know, more than happy to take a look at the request again in the next round of funding. Um, I think there are a couple of other things that we're gonna, uh, put into place, one is we're meeting with the group that's looking to get some federal funds as well, or national funds. And that always is helpful because I think they like to leverage some of those items, um, so we'll see if we can do that, the others would be to coordinate with the city to see what they're asking for going in so that the representatives are not getting multiple requests from the same city, so that's what makes that kind of a challenge, so, um, he did agree. As I think part of our suggestion going in on, on capital funds, um, legislators do like to point to something. So that's why infrastructure things like HVAC systems or upgrades to electrical don't usually make the cut, but when you can point to, look at this facility that's actually performing better, um, and the art is great. Uh, so they do like to support those things, but I do know in this year education had kind of dropped to tenth in prior, there's prioritization for legislators this year, the top were public safety and homelessness and housing, so I think there was more money going through some of those effects, uh, that had been passed, it probably would have been going to education, so it's just gonna mean a coordinated effort. The session coming up this year will be a shorter session, uh, than this one, last one, but there will still be capital funds available. And so he said he's more than happy to look at another application, so I think just some coordination going into that, hopefully it can make the cut next.
So it might be. I mean, the PAC is kind of a, a, a city resource, so I did, I forget, did we get the city?
We got a, we got a letter of endorsement, uh, support from the city that the mayor wrote, so we did have that. It's still in all the virtues of what the PAC actually offers the community, which is great. Um, so I think it's if they're getting competing requests for capital projects, so, um, whatever the region is, I don't know what the other requests they received were.
Yeah, well, I was, when I was looking through the list, the, the community senator got some money for HVAC.
Yeah. So, yeah, we do have, uh, we will be working on, uh, possible air quality grant, that's a, that's a federal grant that opens up again in October. Um, and we've been speaking with the association on that, we're gonna get an air quality test done in the next month or two, so that we'll be in position to apply for that grant. We did apply for it this last year. But they, I think the, for this particular federal grant, they awarded, I think, eighty, it might not have been even eighty, it may have been ten, it was a very small number of grant awards that they made out of like four thousand applications, so it was pretty minimal. Um, but anyway, I think this can help out and, and I think if you can show that, you know, you have the kind of coordinated response, um, and some matching funds from another source, it's always helpful.
And so what was the air, what would we use the air quality?
Um, it's a grant for just funding things like HVAC systems, but there may be something associated with the fact that, yeah, I mean, this is for all the buildings, so, um, this particular grant is one, it's like a clean air grant that we're looking at.
And the jet gear, let me, for them, the CDs airs definitely different than.
They will, they have a particular intention, they'll do it throughout, and each of them, okay, correct.
So do, do we have some kind of plan for updating?
Well, that's what this, once you get this air quality test done, it gives.
Oh, this is, this is a grant to do the test?
Uh, no, the test we will get done.
Okay.
And then the grant is to help upgrade systems, HVAC system, which is part of your facility quality benchmarks that you have.
So when is the, when is the test gonna get done?
Uh, hoping to do it, I asked Ms. Cardenas to get it done in June. And, uh, we have been coordinating with S E I, our local S E I U around getting that done.
So in each building?
Correct.
Okay. And then they'll have some recommendations?
They would give us the data and then that's what we would use to apply for this grant.
Okay.
And that's what I have.
Any additional questions? Okay, um, so that brings us to the, um, update on the board recruitment campaign. Um, I'll speak to this just briefly, um, and we'll have, hopefully enough more information, um, at our next meeting, so um, as folks are probably, hopefully aware, um, uh, filing for the open positions or the positions that will be on the ballot in November was last week. Um, there were two votes that filed, one for position four, um, and one for position two, right? Five, just kidding, so sorry, one for four and one for five, um, so we still do have two positions that, um, as of this moment, uh, will not have anyone on the ballot, there will be a special filing here that opens up in August, so um, we had a preliminary, we, well, we had a few meetings with P S A C, but the last one that we had, um, was really thinking about, what are we gonna do when, um, if, um, this happens? Um, uh, and so, um, we discussed, and I know we've, I've shared some of this before, but we discussed, um, really partnering with the E S D and utilizing some of, um, their resources, um, to be able to support, um, kind of another recruitment effort. Um, so the first way which we're gonna do that, that we really talked about, and I know that, um, uh, Dr. Welch has been working on a little bit, kind of behind the scenes, is we're gonna develop a video, um, that we can, um, kind of really use to, um, spread the word on social media, um, on all of our platforms, um, as just a way to like perhaps, uh, reach folks in a different way. Um, don't really know, uh, the ins and outs of what that's gonna look like, where we have a meeting, uh, set up with, um, uh, the P S A C team next Wednesday morning, um, and, uh, that'll be, um, uh, Dr. Morris, myself. Um, and then, uh, we'll have hopefully more information on like the timeline of what's gonna happen, um, but I, I do know that, uh, Dr. Welch was planning to come um, with some, uh, preliminary plans around what the effort and the timeline of the effort will look like.
I guess the other, just to be probably a little clear on this, uh, make sure we don't get in any trouble, the, the district can put out um, district on board, general things about the, the vacancies, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Information.
Informational in the vision, but if any one of us wanted to, you know, approach an individual about doing it, that should be done, uh, first of all, not using any district resources, i.e. district email, correct? Yeah, okay, just wanna make sure that, I mean, we can still do that as individuals if we want, but it has to be separated from the, yeah, districts, okay?
Yeah, and I think if anybody had questions for you, you can certainly answer informational questions.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I think, yeah, one of the things to probably note that may be informational for people is, so the two positions that um, don't have anybody, or, uh, District two and District three, and District three actually is a two-year term, because they will have to be back on the ballot, and then District two is a four-year term, so it's just informational.
Any other questions, that's. Okay, hopefully much more information, uh, to build the puzzle next, next time. Um, okay, so that'll bring us to director reports. Um, uh, I'll just share real quickly, because this was, um, mine's short, it's mostly been about the board recruitment components, I've had, we've had, um, some meetings with the E S D. Um, and then, of course, um, as well, everyone knows that we are also on the hunt for our next, um, interim super, or our interim superintendent. Um, as, as we say goodbye to Dr. Fendel soon, um, so those are just been the two primary things that I've been focusing on, obviously.
So, um, just a couple of things, I, uh, I've done, been in the rooms for a couple of weekends. Uh, one I'm commenting on is the choir concert at the high school, for the middle school and the high school. It was excellent, and what I noticed most, most is that several years ago, when we would go to those concerts, we couldn't hear anything in the front. This time they were full voiced, they were full of solos, they were totally present. And I just think that our music program is, is doing great things for, for these kids, and, uh, starting to hear that our choir teacher is leaving, I think he's done an excellent job. Um, and, uh, I hope that we're replacing with someone that can um, kind of do what he's done, I've appreciated that he has, uh, brought in a lot of different cultural music, as well as some, uh, justice music, so he's really, and, and some Disney and some popular and so, uh, but he's got the kids engaged and learning some things about history, who needed it, and, and also, uh, having a good time doing solos, so that I really like. Um, the other thing I've been involved in is we have received at my church, fifty new immigrants from Angola in the last month. And, um, so they are obviously going to our schools, not on fifty, um, uh, I think there's been twenty kids that we put in school in our school within the last few weeks. And, uh, I'm really, really exploring what we can do during the summer to, uh, help with the English language learning that they're doing their best at, and just any activities that we can find to enhance their summers, otherwise summer is really long and boring, so, uh, if anybody had any ideas on what we can do, uh, if the kids were not here in time for, for summer school, as far as, so.
My, my intention, we're still working with the I R C on something for some schools, that?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's traditionally what has happened in with new immigrants.
Yeah, I heard today that that wasn't, but it's happening after school, oh, that's after your first one, okay, yeah. So, thank you. Um, looking forward to the staff appreciation dinner next Thursday, hope to see everybody there. Um, Trevor, stay true to Father, have a delicious meal for us, I'm sure, and I don't remember the particulars about Babe and his award, yeah, can you, is there somebody who can, was it athletic director of the year that he got? Wow, that's on his first year, good for him.
So I went to, so, um, Mr. Camacho's in his past, the Environmental Education Group or Environmental Science Group at, uh, Foster is organized, uh, this year for, actually for field trips, day trips for the fifth graders, um, and I went to one of Seward Park, which was on Friday, April twenty-eighth, it turned out to be, um, the perfect Northwest weather day, which we don't always get, so, I mean, it was like seventy degrees, and I doubt it was, couldn't have been any better. Um, what's, uh, a few things interesting about that, first of all, Mr. Claudio did a nice job of, basically, the high school students organized it all, uh, they were the, um, the mentors, they've had the different, uh, groups around, it was all the fifth graders from all three elementary schools, and, um, uh, there was, um, one of the students was the logistics coordinator, which is, um, and, you know, these things are, uh, a teamwork, a team effort, because, you know, we had like half our buses, I think, delivering there at Seward Park, delivering all the students, and got them back safely, and then the food services provided all the lunches, and then, uh, the parents, there are a lot of parents there for, um, uh, chaperones, and the nice thing also, I think this is the first time it's ever happened, is able to find some money to actually pay the chaperones for doing it, so that was really good. Um, and then, of course, the high school students did a great job of leading, they divided up into groups and went around and went around to one of them, and, you know, it's always, um, interesting, I mean, the, the relationship between the elementary kids and the high school is, is kind of a priceless thing, they get those relationships. Um, kids will talk about them later, later in life, the, you know, the notes that they got, and I was at one of the thing where the, one of the high school students was, was, um, uh, in real time translating some of the English for one of the students that was still, uh, learning English, so there's a lot of really good things that, that went on, there's, I guess he's got two more of them, one, the tomorrow, oh, yes, at Washington Park Arboretum, and then on June second at, uh, Carke Park, so hopefully the good weather will continue. Um, I went to, yeah, the choir that, um, that, uh, Director Boljak was talking about. Um, yeah, one of the things, I mean, our entire music program was basically decimated during COVID, and it's taking, uh, a few years to build it back up, but I can already tell you that, you know, the fire program has advanced significantly over the last couple of years that I've seen it, and, you know, the big thing is there's a lot more, in most music programs, uh, the more people you have, and the more students you have there, the better the programs are. And there's a lot more, uh, students that were participating, and hopefully, uh, and, yeah, there's some very impressive, um, solos, which I'd not seen for, for years, so, um, anyway, yeah, Mr. Toad did a great job of, um, of building that program up, hopefully the momentum can continue. Of course, the bad news is that he's, uh, that he's leaving, but, um, anyway, got it, got it, he got it moving and definitely in a good direction. Um, the other arts event I went to was, uh, the play, The Night of the Living Dead, which was really interesting, it's, it's based on a, a nineteen sixty-eight, uh, horror film that was revolutionary for the time for one reason, because they, I think at the time it was the first deaf American who was a lead in that particular film and that genre. And so, anyway, the students, it's, it's always interesting when you take pieces of art that were created in one period and, and translate them into another period. Part of the thing about the play was, um, uh, reaction, the societal reaction to, you know, kind of an attack or prices in the society, which translates really nicely in some ways to our COVID, you know, how we reacted to the uh, society reacted to COVID and the panic and how things worked out, and so, um, anyways, it really is a very thought-provoking, uh, play, and um, Mr. Hernandez and all the students did a really nice, nice job of the sets and the lighting and the sound and everything was done really well. I think the students, I remember when she was, um, Renan, Mr. Hernandez was advertising to get people, the advertisement was, you know, come and get dressed up like zombies, and so, I think that a lot of the students enjoyed dressing up like zombies and had a good time doing it as well, and so, anyway, that was, again, that's another program that, um, uh, is building up fortunately, as far as I know, Mr. Hernandez is still going to be around next year. And, uh, that's a program that's traditionally been strong at Foster and is now, uh, coming back in a nice, nice way, so, um, I went to, we had one of our, uh, community liaisons, Azia Raimese. Uh, gave a nice overview of the staff to, um, Afghanistan and customs, that's something we do occasionally, which is, I think, really helpful, there's a lot of teachers there listening to, uh, him talk about, um, customs in the country, educational experiences, you know, it's, it's really helpful to know that stuff when you're acting with students, and you might interpret something the wrong way, because you don't know what the culture they came from, and they're not, it's not disrespectful, but it's just, so, anyway, it's always great when our community liaisons, um, do that. Um, let's see, talk about graduation, I just wanted to let people know, the senior awards night is gonna be January seventh, which is two days before graduation, six thirty at the PAC, and that's where, that's always a great thing, everybody's invited to come, that we, you know, award lots of scholarships and, uh, recognize students for things like sealed by literacy, and so it's always a great, um, a great night of celebration to go with compliments to graduation. Oh, yeah, so Friday and Saturday, I was over in Spokane at, uh, WASTA legislative committee meeting, um, where we, uh, basically are reviewing all the proposals for changes to WASTA legislative positions that come in, and and it's like most committees do, we, uh, talk about them and then recommend them, ask to be passed for the general assembly, which takes place in, um, September. Um, it was, it was interesting, the, you know, like most legislative things, most things go through kind of are not controversial, the big controversial one this year is revolves around, um, inclusion, inclusionary practices in curriculum, and, you know, so there was a bill in which they did this year to include LGBTQ people, um, uh, you know, requiring that curriculum be inclusive of those folks, and it was very controversial in the legislature, and it didn't, um, it didn't get through this year because there's a, I mean, as you can imagine, in the country and the state, there's a huge controversy on that particular issue. And, uh, I'm sure it'll be back next year, uh, and that same, you know, WASTA is in a lot of ways representative of the state as a whole, because people are coming from all around, and so, um, we spent, there was like two hours talking about a proposal that somebody put forward to say that, you know, local control should be the determinant of what's included in curriculum, and, um, in the end, that one, we voted, do not pass on that one, um, because the whole issue, um, local control is being used to kind of, um, uh, allow districts to exclude people, and, um, the proposal that, because, and WASTA itself, uh, when that proposal came into the House, testified other, and the reason they did, WASTA strategic advocacy groups have to base their positions that they testify on WASTA positions, and then it was controversial, because we have one position says local control should determine, and then we have other ones that talk about inclusion, and they couldn't, so they, they came out with this, this, uh, testifying other, so, which is why, uh, going back to the proposal that we put in to say that, um, you know, civil rights, um, of, uh, students should be respected and not overridden by local control, so that one, um, is going to the other committee, the resolutions committee, which does the values ones. If that one, uh, passes, uh, then that should provide some clarity to WASTA so that they can come out next year in favor of it. So anyway, that's a long discussion about, it's just to let people know, it's, it's, it's probably the biggest hot topic in WASTA going, and it's also a big topic in the legislature, and um, but hopefully, and I, I'm fairly confident that WASTA will come, when the general assembly will vote, uh, for that, and so next year will be able to, WASTA will be able to advocate, you know, in favor of it, and so hopefully it'll get through next year. Um, and that's what I have, thanks.
Uh, thank you very much for bringing that to us to approve, and then bringing that to WASTA, um, and, and then just for explaining the circular nature of that.
Yeah, it's, it's a little complicated, but I think it's an important issue.
But it's nice to know that, like, now, like, me and I'm sure other folks, you know, around the estate have now helped them power wild to, to be able to legally stand in our values.
And I think it will pass this year, because, uh, you know, partly because I'm pretty confident that the larger districts, particularly on the west side, will, will support it, and so, I, I know that a lot of the smaller districts on the east side don't like that, but, you know, that's, it's impact to see words.
It is, yep. Yeah, I did notice that, thank you. Um, Dennis, welcome, really glad that you've joined us. Um, we just finished with the reports, but would love to circle back to you if you have a report to offer this evening.
Ah, yeah, thank you.
I can hear myself. This is a little weird. Um, I, uh, yes, I've been working on, um, uh, a mental health report. So, um, it's a survey going around, you know, talking to students at the high school and the middle school level to, um, get their feedback on the current mental health services that are currently being offered here at our district, just to see what they think. And so far, we've been getting some really like hard-hitting, um, answers. And, um, I hope that, uh, the report will be ready sometime by the next board meeting. And there will be a lot of things to talk about.
Thank you. Looking forward to that. And thank you so much for your, uh, partnership with, um, Dr. Barry Shade on that, that work. All right. Uh, so that concludes our reports for this evening. So we'll move to the consent agenda. You know, motion. Move to prove, yeah. Thank you, sir. Do you want to motion to approve the agenda? Does it have something?
No, I just have a question. Well, as long as this before, since it's good. Um, I was curious, probably a question, uh, uh, finance director. So, um, my understanding, so I was looking at asking the question about Rachel Powers, who's doing tutoring service for Abba Bakr, which is the, the one practice of school up here. Do we, so Title One funds come to our districts and then we need to kind of share it with other, just other schools in our, you know, in our area, correct? Are there, so Abba Bakr, I know, is, are there any other schools? I'm just curious that were, uh, distributing some Title One money to?
Not at this time, but at some point it was Abba Bakr and, um, the one that's
Oh, Academy? Or no? Oh.
No, not that one. Further, it's a charter school that's on. I can't think of the name of it, but at some point there was the other one.
Yeah, there's one on Interurban.
Can't think of the name of it, but at one point it was two of them that we had qualified students attending.
But this year there's only one, only the one. Okay, okay. Just curious. Thanks.
Um, okay, so it's been moved, second. All in favor? Very, thank you. Um, okay. So next is, um, the board discussion. And I, I think it's more just an update to community of where we are in the interim superintendent process. Um, so we had a meeting last week. Um, and we will be moving forward with, um, some interviews of some candidates next week. Thank you, next Wednesday. Um, and so we are still on the timeline that we, um, uh, shared, uh, with, with everyone previously. Um, so everything is feeling on track with that. Um, so not really much more to report, um, uh, except for that's where we're at in the process. And if you have any specific questions, you're welcome to connect with us. Any, anything else to add? All right, we're right on. Uh, so that brings us now to our questions only presentations. Um, so we can just kind of go down the list. Any additional questions on the financial forecast? How about the enrollment report? It's exciting. We've got higher enrollment. That's neat. Yeah. I mean, I don't want to get too excited. The trend might change, but nice to see that, um, especially with what we've, we've seen in the past, you know.
I do, I have a question about the um, staff staffing numbers for the elementaries. Is it determined by head count? Or how, how many, uh, FTE, I mean, how many, uh, yeah, FTEs are there?
Yes, so K three has a, uh, right, there's a couple of things. Right. So you have the OSPI, so I think compliance and you have the CBA compliance and then fourth and fifth, um, we have our, we have our own OSPI threshold and we have our CBA. So, yeah, it's based on head count.
So, um, Cascade View and are like, are right now quite a bit different, three ninety eight and three twenty, right? I'm looking at head count. Is that what I should be looking?
It'd be current grade though, right? Because that necessarily, because it, the thresholds could be different for K, say K two versus three, three five. So the total number.
Yeah.
Correct. Three ninety eight, three twenty eight. That's the head count. And for elementary, head count and FTE are pretty much the same. Because they almost all attend full-time. So we don't have much of a difference.
No running start for.
Both of those schools have the same number of FTEs. Can you, can you tell us how many FTEs are at each?
Are you talking for staff FTE?
Yes.
I think we'll have to get back.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, monthly budget status report. Hey, summer school update.
I was just curious, the probably a question, well, okay. Because I think you answered that. Because this, who's funding our Tukula summer feeding program? It was coming from the city of Seattle.
Yes, we are using the city of Seattle to run the program.
How did, so there, why are they funding Tukula's?
It's not necessarily they're funding, they're just, they're running it. So.
Oh, they're running it. Providing insurance.
So, yes.
Oh, okay. We're still paying for it.
We're buying from them. Oh, there is no buying.
They use, their meals are free, right? Yeah. So they're running the service and they offer their meals.
Oh, it is. Oh.
And so it's, well, since the summer feeding program, it's not just within the city limits of Seattle.
How does that, yeah.
Both of our foster high schools in Tukula meet their parameters to qualify as a feeding site for them.
Those are the ones that offer meals to other young people.
And that's coming out of the city of Seattle budget?
No, I'm sure it has to do with all the federal like.
Oh, okay. They're running the program. They're getting, okay, gotcha. Okay. All right. I was just, yeah, why would they be, okay.
Which is true, but what an opportunity to like advertise that super widely for our community.
And so we're also working with, uh, um, Harvest Association, who they're creating a map of all the different feeding sites in the city of Tukula. So I've been in contact with them. And so our site will be advertised on their map. Our two sites will be advertised on their maps, just like there are some sites where that are having snacks. And then there's always one site in our community that's doing dinner. So that families can be able to see all the various sites. We have two Tukula Elementary and Foster because that's where our summer school programs are. Um, but other sites in Tukula will be a part of the summer. Yeah, there will be one of the part, there's one at Spice Bridge too. And not every one of them operates every day. But, yeah, they're, we're part of the group that's putting together advertising sites, but families in Tukula are no more qualified.
So, I have a question about the enrollment person in school. Do you have any insights? Why, I guess, you had such a higher enrollment. Were there more invitations put there or?
So initially, there were more students from Cascade View that met the, when we started out by having the criteria. Okay. That was our first group of working with the students for about two or more, three almost below in the reading and math and I read. And then when we exhausted that list, then we opened it up to the entire community. And still, Cascade View involve more, those families involve more students. I think the school did a really great job of advertising. In general.
So.
Now that the other school didn't do a great job, like Cascade View definitely, put that out there for all their families. And the way we made the registration that's here, um, if a family was unable to do their online registration themselves, then a teacher could fill out on their behalf and they would start to make a note at the bottom that they had done on behalf of the family. And then our office just confirmed with the family that, yes, they did indeed want their child registered for summer school. So our goal was to have the registration process itself be as low barrier entry as possible.
And how does the registration process work for the the other program that's happening after school?
For the IRS program.
Thank you.
So, uh, they can only serve our city eligible families who are, families who are on a variety of refugee visas. And so my, um, we have shared with them, they sent us some parameters of what could be eligible students that we shared with them, contact information of those families. And they have about, um, forty elementary families that met those barriers. And then they have to collect documentation from them in order to be able to serve them in the summer program. And so there, if it's a, if it is an immigrant family, it's not here on one of those specialized cases, then they are not eligible for the IRS. And that's the same, like, that was, we haven't changed that same story.
So that's going to be the focus.
Very, and that's weird. So the reason we're giving IRS the after-school, the during the day, we want all of those students to be able to participate in our summer program. And then be able to do it at our system. Last year, they had, kids would have to pick which one they need to do. We want to avoid families having to make a choice. We'd like them to be able to do as much of any process.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, that brings us to our action items for this evening. So the first point is the approval of the community resources staffing report. If I can get a motion. All in favor? Um, second is the approval of out-of-state travel for the National Association for Education of Homeless Youth and Children. Um, any questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor? All right, stand approved. Um, that brings us to our final opportunity for public comment. Um, so seeing that some additional folks have joined us online, uh, if there's anyone that would like to offer public comment, you can raise your hand using that recent function or type your name in the chat, which is now open. We'll give you a few minutes. All right. Well, seeing none, then, uh, we will move to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?